Oh, no.
No, we've got the, um...
We moved it to January.
There you go.
It was like the week after here in December. Sorry, Josh.
No.
The council.
The zoning committee.
Zoning board.
Zoning board made amendments to... Well, the Cliff's Notes version is that they changed it so it would be a conditional zone. So every single person...
They changed it.
Yeah, they changed it.
We didn't change it. We don't have to accept those changes.
We don't have to. I mean, I think, we don't have to.
Yeah.
I mean, my opinion flat out is if we don't accept it, we should just table it permanently and... Or take it as it is. Because everybody's put the two cents in at this point and they spend enough time on it. That's how I...
We had pens at work.
So basically, that just means that every person that wants to...
You said pens in there and then they won't disappear.
You used them.
I put them back all the time.
And I think it's like a two or three year trial period for that.
This never fails.
I don't think that's legal.
Really?
Because they can erase it.
All right, it's seven o'clock. We call this Shrek City Council meeting to order. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for coming tonight. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Hatterline?
Present.
Schultz?
Present.
Lavelle?
Here.
Carncross?
Present.
Lancaster?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Perkins?
Present.
Luna?
Here.
Coramus, present mayor.
Thank you, clerk. Item three on the agenda is for public comment. Is there any, um, one in the audience wishes to address the city council for any item that is not on the agenda? If you want to speak about something that's on the agenda, we'll have those open comments at that time. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, item number four, four A through four K. Is there any item on the consent agenda that the council wishes to remove from the consent agenda? There are none. I'll accept the motion to accept the consent agenda items four A through four K.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda items. I'll second it.
Wish my Hatterline, second by Lancaster. Any comments, questions? Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five is dispensed with since nothing was removed from consent agenda. Item six is, um, your permission to pay the bills in the amount of one million nine hundred eleven thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and fifty-two cents.
I'll make a motion to approve paying the bills.
Second, I wish my Hatterline, second by Schultz. Comments, questions? Clerk, call the roll.
With Lavelle?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item number seven is Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation from December fifth, 2023. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval with certain changes of the petition submitted by the city of Harvard seeking amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance to amend section 2.3 definition of general terms and section 9.3 accessory structures and uses of the UDO to include backyard chickens in residential zoning districts. This will require city council to approve, modify, or reject the commission's recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning board's recommendation.
Shouldn't, um, somebody talk about the final version of the, you know, like a presentation of some sort? Um, we could certainly have that done, um... We got some stuff. There's several things I'd like to address in here that, um, you know, item by item as we roll through it. Well, so Alderman, if we get a second on this, then you open the floor up for discussion about it before you decide to vote or not vote. Well, that'd be fine too, but it just, um... Okay, well, okay. Either way, I just think there's some things that need to be covered because there's some things that conflict with each other in here that I don't think will work and, uh, and so I just need to, I think we need to decide. Plus, there were some items that he had questions on whether we wanted to do it or not do it. And they're not in here. The things that they, that the zoning commission recommended, like charge per chicken and there's some other things in there that, small things, but, um, that never actually got put into this version of of the ordinance. So I think we need to discuss those things.
Do you want to second the motion just to open discussion or I could withdraw my motion?
Well, I guess that's your decision to make. But it's your pleasure.
I can withdraw my motion and we can have discussion first.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Okay, it's fine.
Motion is withdrawn, uh, withdrawn. Donovan, if you could, um, kind of go through the ordinance for the council.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they had a great discussion, great input from the residents as well, and they recommended to the city council several changes. Changes recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission include changing the lot size. Originally was one to three acres for eight birds. They changed that to two to three net acres. And then it was less than one net acre for four birds. They changed that to less than two net acres for four birds. Item two F, or item F permitting enforcement, they wanted to add verbiage to include a ten-foot minimum setback for a coop and the city to set a chicken registration fee on a per-chicken basis and outline that a vaccination record is required. Item three in my memo, ad language that would be probationary period of two years as a conditional use. I spoke with attorney Clifton. He confirmed that during the two-year period, this use would be a conditional use, requiring that a petition be filed for a conditional use. Conditional use would require a public hearing for each petition. Item four, ad language that would use, that use would be probationary period of two years as a conditional use. Uh, the proposed amendments I included along with my memo are attached and highlighted in red. The staff and my, our recommendation to the city council was to discuss the need for a conditional use permit if you think that was appropriate. I outlined what the fee for that would be. It's nine hundred dollars, it's five hundred dollar filing fee, it's four hundred dollar deposit, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong. A four hundred dollar deposit, they would get some of that deposit back. Lori looked up what we did for Greenway Storage. I think they spent about two hundred and fifty dollars of that four hundred dollar deposit. So they would get a little bit of money back. Uh, so that's one discussion item. Then the per-chicken registration fee, agree or disagree? Believe that was to cover the cost of the bands that would go on the chicken legs. Those bands are a dollar or less from what I researched, so I don't know. I personally don't know that we need a separate fee to cover that dollar or less, especially if the council agrees to a three hundred dollar permit fee which would cover that. And then the final item to be discussed, additional consideration could include limiting the amounts of permits as other municipalities have done. Hebron limited theirs to fifty and Rolling Meadows limited to twenty-five permits total. So those were a few of the discussion items that I thought were important if we were to move forward.
Donovan, when did they institute chicken permit in Fox Lake?
Two thousand fourteen, thirteen or fourteen.
And how many applications have they had since then?
So Patty Russell, administrative assistant over there, she only could find information for the last five years and it was four or five.
Okay.
And it was four since two thousand eighteen. I had thought we were issuing around four to five a year. She laughed, said, "No, that's not true." So my apologies for misstating that. And I was surprised to see other places like Evanston with a population of just over seventy-seven thousand. They've adopted their ordinance in two thousand and ten. They had fifty over that period from two thousand and ten to twenty twenty-three, uh, but only twenty-seven active. So they do an annual fee and know who's still operating a backyard chicken coop and who's not. So they only have twenty-seven active at this time. Rolling Meadows adopted in two thousand and nineteen. They only, they limit it to twenty-five. And Dan Stride, who works for Rolling Meadows, believes they've issued about three. Spring Grove issued one since April twenty twenty-three and Hebron's issued three since October two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It seems to me like the, um, you know, I have a question about, uh, like the probationary period, which is a two-year, I believe, probationary period was recommended. And we have a, you know, an application process plus a yearly inspection. And if they don't pass those, they don't get to have chickens. I'm not sure the probationary period is necessary because we've already got a system in place to, uh, you know, to stop them from having chickens if they violate any of the rules. And all probation is, you know, can do is say you're going to take care of those chickens during that two-year period. Alderman, I believe the probationary period was the period in which you would require a conditional use permit. Well, okay, let's go to that then. Um, you know, on the conditional use permit, it seems, I'm not sure what that accomplishes. I'm not sure what the process would bring additionally, except for the fact that the adjacent and adjoining properties are notified. We can do that without having, um, without having a conditional use permit. We could, we could send out notices to those people saying that an application has been made and that if they have any questions, they can see the community development department. That, that way you have a process without the price and the time of everyone involved. Uh, and I think it's what we're trying to accomplish with that, is that we want, you know, the neighbors of that person to be able to know about it, say something about it, argue, you know, and so on. And I think it would be particularly powerful if there was a, um, a system in place that would allow for appeal to the city council on top of that. So the whole thing would take place in the community development, but if they were unhappy with that, they could appeal. We have that in some other ordinances already as well.
Charlie, can I ask a question about that? So if a neighbor objects, I mean, what's the standard for the staff to approve or not approve?
Well, I looked into that and there's no, there's no standard for the zoning commission either.
Right, but at least with the zoning commission, there is a hearing and they do have to provide some minutes, some findings of fact that is part of a public process with an administrative, you know, process. That's pretty arbitrary.
But normally that would be used for something, like in this case, if they wanted to do something beyond a normal, um, chicken coop. And that's where the findings of facts come in. I mean, if it's all cookie cutter, um, you know, type, you know, it's an application, you fill it out, you check, tick off all the boxes, then I don't see what the finding of facts would do above and beyond what the, you know, the administration of the city could do. You know, as a matter of fact, they would be more knowledgeable, it seems to me, about what the requirements are than the zoning commission. So, there you go.
Sorry.
Yes.
At section fourteen.
I, I think what I meant was is that if there were three, three, um, three neighbors who were adamantly against, um, having whatever the variance is, uh, that board would still be able to overrule those objections and go forward. They could, yes. And so it seems to me that we can accomplish that for something this small just as easily, um, without the extra procedure, by going through the community development department.
I would suggest that if, if it's a checklist of items that it's approved, you know, that, okay, you have to meet these things in order for this to be approved, I would suggest not notifying the neighbors to add that to it because you're basically saying, we're telling you this is coming, but if they meet all of these criteria, they're getting their permit. You know what I mean? I mean, because that's what we're saying, is we're telling the staff, here's the criteria that they have to meet and we're notifying the neighbors, then they get the chance to complain, but as long as the, all of those things are being checked off, I mean, I don't see how we could not issue them a permit because then it's being pretty arbitrary just saying that, oh, well, your neighbor doesn't like this, so we're not, we're going to deny your permit.
Well, yeah, it's never that simple, but I think that there may be some circumstance that that neighbor's aware of that is not on that list that they want this, the city to know about.
I mean, we went through this with the driveways, with widening the driveways. I mean, and for years, we had folks, you know, submit a petition to widen their driveway, go through all of that, notify the neighbors. We never got any comments from the neighbors and so we made that an administrative process. I, I think from an administrative standpoint, I think whatever we end up approving, it needs to be very clear because under that process, if we said, if we said, okay, well, we're going to have the staff notify the neighbors about the driveway widening and then if a neighbor complains, then it's up to them to decide whether or not they get to widen it.
No.
It's, it's, to me, it's the same issue.
I, it, I'll give you an example. I'd hate to take too much time on this, but I'll give you an example. I needed a variance for a garage I built and my neighbor wasn't too happy about it because he thought by building that garage, it would drain into his basement. Okay? I met all the criteria though. There was a garage there before at the same level and so on, but this was his complaint. The process that we had though allowed me to talk to him because, you know, and we worked out a deal where I I paid for a drainage ditch that hooked up to his eavespouts and we were able to work that out. If, and that's, that's part of this, I think, is that you do want the neighbors to know, you do want to give them an opportunity to talk. And the first step in that stage, it says in all the books that I've read, said that if, the first step is try to work it out with your neighbor before you get into the... And this gives them an opportunity to do that if they want to, you know, if they want to do that. So I just thought that was a good substitute for the full-blown, um, you know, conditional use thing that costs...
But your, your case, it was you actually filed for a variance. You had a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So that, but that's a big difference of actually going to the public hearing rather than just administratively...
But we were able to work it out before the public hearing, so he withdrew his complaint.
That's great.
Okay.
Yes, that's great, but you still had the public hearing process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. They weren't, they weren't just notified that you wanted to rebuild your garage. I mean, I think that's what the conditional use process, I mean, I, I agree. I have concerns about the cost. It seems excessive, um, for, for this use, but that's at least what the conditional use process provides is that, is that hearing, that public hearing.
Donovan, how many of these municipalities have the conditional use permit process for these?
No municipality does.
Okay, that's what I thought when I was reading. The only one that I saw that had something similar to a probationary period that we might accept tonight was the Evanston one, which only allowed twenty active for one year. And then after that, it was fine. It was just... The nine hundred, I think, is outrageous. Um, which ones have, you need to have a privacy fence around your property? All the other ones I've read is only saying the chicken runs.
That's correct.
We have a privacy fence, which is outrageous. Three thousand, eight thousand dollars. Why can't we just say you need a run for the chickens instead of the privacy fence? If I may, I, I looked into that and we don't have a requirement for a fence. We, we actually don't in this thing. So it's not actually there because I couldn't find it, but up top with this thing is showing it. I know. I talked to Donovan about it and there is a confusion there between screening and fence. There, there is a requirement for a six-foot screening around the run and the coop. There is no requirement for a fence. Okay. And, um, so, but that brings up another thing though, that when we get into this thing, I don't know if anybody noticed section C three that we, that it allows for large lot grazing. In other words, you can let your chickens out according to C three as long as you shepherd them. I mean, it literally says, if there's, as long as there's supervision, you can let them out. If two acres or larger. Yeah, but that, it also means, and then it says the entire property, which means your chickens can graze in the front yard. Two acres is pretty large for a municipality lot. There's only, that's Maringale Road and that's it. I'm just saying it's in there. I know, you know, I, you know, I think that, uh, you know, I, I, as a matter of fact, I, what I recommend is we move, remove that completely. There should be no grazing. It has to be within a run. There's no limit to run size in this, so if you want to have a larger run, you can. There's a minimum, but there's no maximum. And then as long as you had a six-foot screening around that run, uh, you would be okay. So, but yeah, I couldn't find the fencing. I even did one of those Google things where you try to find the word and it wasn't even in there, so... I mean, it was, but it was only there where Donovan put it.
Yeah, the screening portion mentions in order to, in order for screening to be deemed sufficient, it must be located between the enclosure and every lot line on the property, be composed of plantings, materials, or structures at least six feet in height that obstruct the view from neighboring properties and streets similarly throughout the entire year and be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. So whether it's a privacy fence, arborvitae, uh, which we had talked about, cost of that can be costly to purchase a six-foot arborvitae or nine-foot in Deb's case. Um, so there is a cost to either one.
Which really lowers that cost, by the way. I, you know, I figured it out. Of course, I don't know what chickens cost and I don't know what, uh, there's an estimate in here that a coop costs around three hundred. I have a funny feeling it might be a little more than that in some cases.
Yeah, for that one, I just went on Farmat Fleet's website, looked about what the average smaller chicken coop was and...
Screening is going to be variable too. Um, if you use arborvitae, I think, they have to be six feet tall. I don't think they're going to allow you to put one-foot ones in and then wait till they get to be... Wait till they get six feet tall. And when they get to be six feet, they're quite a bit, they're fairly expensive. Yeah. Um, and then the license fee. So you, you may, it seems to me like you should be able to get in around eleven hundred dollars if, if you get rid of the conditional use and, and there is no fence requirement. So that's good news, I think, right? And then, uh, and then we need to lose that C three with grazing. I think that needs to go because I really don't think we want that and, uh, I've never seen anybody successfully shepherd chickens. I, I remember when I was little, I watched my grandmother, she would make a deal with the lady next door for a chicken. And then they would, they'd go over by the pan and say, "I'll take that one. Is that one okay?" And she'd say, "Yeah." And then I'd watch my grandmother chase that chicken because it did not want to be picked. And, uh, but anyway, I just think that would be hard. I've seen, I've seen, uh, border collies do it, but not, not, not humans.
So Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Are you suggesting removal of C three?
Just, no, I, I'd say we change it to be no grazing, just no...
No grazing?
Yes.
And then...
No grazing outside of the run.
Outside of the run.
Yeah, but I don't think that's considered grazing.
Okay.
No free range.
No, no free range grazing.
And then, uh, the conditional use, are you suggesting to get rid of the conditional use requirement?
Yeah, yeah, and, and I would be okay with replacing it with that, but there seems to be some, some people who still...
What about the two years probation?
I don't think we need that because of the, that we are going to be doing an inspection every year to renew the license. We're charging thirty dollars for that and it seems to me that's when a decision can be made if this, if that particular, um, residents can continue raising chickens.
At least from, um, my recollection from the zoning board meeting was that the two years was proposed as a way of, um, having a timeframe for evaluating the program and whether it was, there were, um, whether there were problems with it. Not two years limit on a permit, but two years on that we're approving the program and we'll evaluate it in two years. Was what, was what the, um...
Is that what it says in this ordinance?
That was, that, I believe that was the discussion.
That's what I got out of it, was that it was meant to be a two-year conditional temporary probationary period.
Yeah, let's try this for two years.
And then reevaluate at the end of two years to determine if it should be continued as conditional use or, or otherwise.
The expectation was a two-year probationary period to require conditional use. And at the end of that two years, if the council decided conditional use was no longer required and that we were going to implement the program fully without conditional use, that was kind of the umbrella of why it was a two-year probationary, probationary period was, that was the kind of sunset, if you will, on conditional use permit requirement. Okay, well, since I think we should get rid of the conditional use, then I, we should get rid of the probationary period then because if it's part of it.
The thing that I will say about the conditional use is that since we are making a change to the UDO, if there, if, take, giving it not conditional use, we're back to a similar discussion that we had over the Motorola properly on whether something should be conditional or permitted. Because once we've got it in there as permitted, it's going to be a lot harder to change that or remove that down the road. If it's conditional even for two years, or let's say a year, whatever period of time, that gives us the window to reevaluate the program at the end of that two years. If we don't have that, we don't really have a way to evaluate that program. We either have to go back and re, send everything to the zoning board, reevaluate the, the, we'd have to take it upon ourselves.
We can change an ordinance whenever we want.
Correct, but this creates that, that revaluation in the place. I mean, this has already taken us how much time just to draft the ordinance. If we want to change this or reverse it or do whatever in a couple of years, we're going to still be looking at several months of reviewing it, putting it through, change the UDO, and come back to the board to reevaluate.
Change the UDO.
I mean, two years is not that long. And at least it gives us some, a layer of oversight to see how this program's really running as opposed to just implementing it, putting it in place. Now it's there and where it's going to be, if there is problems, it's an uphill battle all the way through.
Alderman Carncross, I think we still do a two-year period where, where staff is evaluating it, we're providing a report annually. How many complaints we receive, things like that, so that after a year or two years, you can say, all right, this is getting out of hand. These do need to be conditional use permits. these do need to be conditional use permits." And then we can make that justification then.
But what would happen to any of the permitted permits that are already in place? Would those then have to be reevaluated as conditional, or would those be grandfathered in?
I don't think they'd be grandfathered in.
Yeah, I mean, generally, the conditional use is going to run with the applicant, not necessarily, like, not necessarily with the land. I do think that this body does need to clarify this two-year probationary period, does it sunset at the end of two years? And when it sunsets, does that mean there are now permitted uses that get administratively approved? Or does it sunset after two years such that it's no longer a permitted use or a conditional use? I think this body will need to clarify that, because as currently drafted, I think there'd be some confusion with regard to what would happen at the end of that two-year period.
I mean, my opinion on the sunsetting would be, what would make sense to me, anyway, is a conditional use period, at the end of that two years, it's reevaluated by the zoning board, they can make a recommendation on it if they think it's viable to continue. Comes to us, we decide if we want to continue or not based on the recommendation. I mean, we're, we, we rely on their recommendation based on their expertise on zoning. So, I mean, that's, that's what the body is there for, for that reason. So, they give them two years, we look, they look at it, they tell us if it's necessary or not, and then we can decide our own if we want to continue it that way, or we can tell them no.
The mere fact that there is a lot of ambiguity here, I, my recommendation to the council would be to send this back to committee, so you can hammer out these details to come back here to approve it. That's my recommendation.
Yeah, I was going to ask that...
This would not need to go back to zoning board, though, would it?
No, we'd go back to the administration committee.
Let me clarify functionality of this meeting. If we were to vote on this right now, and what would the vote be for it to be rejected? Would it have to be a super majority? No?
No.
Straight majority?
Simple majority.
Simple majority, okay.
With your pleasure. Well, I would just like to bring up two more things, and, you know, just to, so everybody has it, and, and that is one, there was something I really liked in the Spring Grove ordinance that you provided, and that was, they had a very good explanation and requirement for what a chicken coop is. And I think that would, some, you know, putting that in to the document and to our ordinance would be a very good idea, because they can be just slapped together with tin sheets and, you know, if you ever watched Little Rascals, you know, some of the, some of the things they built, that's what a lot of chicken coops can look like, if you don't have some kind of regulations as to what they, how they need to be built. So I think that would be a good idea. And lastly, I think we should put something in there that, that talks about the current people who illegally have chickens, and that they have to get on board with this program. There is no grandfathering, that they would have to, you know, register their chickens, build a proper kind of coop, that sort of thing, to get on board, or get out of the chicken business, one of the two. Because I, because I would like to see this, this ordinance be something that causes the whole city to be, you know, do this honestly, and, and the right way. And I think that we might have to put something in there, if somebody say, "Well, I've had chickens here for 15 years, and I'm not..." I don't think they should be able to do that.
Alderman Gorman, it sounds like you have enough concerns. Do you want to recommend that this go to, back to the admin committee?
Well, I was hoping not, but I am more than willing to, yes. I, I think that if, I was afraid that if there were too many things, and it was going to be very difficult to, to pass this, you know, to make it so that somebody could get it right, what was agreed to. So it probably would be a good idea to run it through admin one more time.
You had quite a few good points in there, and it, and just judging by some of the comments that were already made, is maybe it does need to go back to the admin committee. So if, if you're making that recommendation...
I would make the motion to return this to the admin committee, to go through it one more time.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to send the matter back to the admin committee. Before we do that, we have not allowed the public to speak on this issue, and so I do want to open a floor for the public. Because this is going to go back to the admin committee, I'll limit your thoughts to three minutes each, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
Dave Helmey, 308 North Jefferson Street. Thank you, Charlie, you represented your board well tonight. I agree with almost everything that you said. I think that concerning the two-year limit on the conditional use would be an ineffective way of measuring the success or failure of the program, because the cost of the contingency is going to prohibit a lot of people from participating in the program. The costs are just getting too expensive to have four chickens. You know, a contingency of $900, $450, whatever it is, to decide in two years whether we want this to be a law or not is, is outrageous. Certainly don't have an issue with any of the other rules that were in it. It was my understanding that when this committee did their homework, and I appreciate you all doing it, and put this forth to the planning and zoning board, and their expertise, throw that around loosely, that it was put to them to bring it back to you without that contingency. They failed to do that, they failed to address it until the very last minute of that meeting, and they even tried to motion to bring four chickens down to two arbitrarily. They had a packet of information with them, and all but one board member was completely unaware of any of the meetings we've had, any of the facts that were brought forth beforehand, and I thought they were ill-prepared to do their job. And as far as what this committee asked them to do, I don't think they did do their job. It seems like more of an episode of Shark Tank, or a Supreme Court, for some people that aren't voted into power and don't have constituents. So I had a real problem with that. And I think that getting rid of the contingency would urge more people to be a part of the program, and we could better evaluate how well it's going to work on a broad spectrum if more people are allowed to participate. I think part of the progress of our community isn't just measured by what businesses come to town, but having a populace that's involved in local government and community law changes. And if it takes this much red tape to get four chickens in a backyard, when you can have an unlimited number of other pets, or stray cats, I don't own any cats, I have three strays. And it seems excessive, it does, and, and it should be wrapped up and streamlined, otherwise people are going to be less likely to participate in things like this.
Thank you very much for your comments. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Yes, my name is Sarah Berg, I live at 508 Old Orchard Road. I would ask that you keep the conditional use in place. You can control the price, I believe this body can control the price of that, or you could reduce your fees for the city, if you feel that the price of, of doing this is too much. I don't believe that notifying people about a big change in zoning, and letting them call the department and say, "Hey, I don't like it," and, I mean, that's not really a fair hearing of the neighbor that will have a change in the zoning. Part of that, maybe people will complain, and it will still pass, but you may have a neighbor that has tons of violations, other concerns, a history with poor neighboring that may be a problem. So, again, I don't think the cost, I think the cost should be acceptable for people that want to do chickens, and you can control this. Whether you reduce some of your fees, or reduce some of the other ones, I would request that you find a way that it's cost-effective for the people wanting the chickens, but still allows people that are concerned that their neighbors may be doing something wrong that they can have an input to. And as far as other cities doing it, there are other cities doing conditional use. I'd have to go back and look at mine, but Fox Lake and Evanston are not the only cities that do it. So I could get those names, or those different cities that do do conditional use. In fact, quite a few do. So thank you very much.
Hello, Jessica Helmey, 308 North Jefferson Street. So I was thinking, like, is there a way that instead of we have to have these hearings, could we work into the permit a way where you bring in your neighbor's signatures? I mean, for the most part, I don't think people are going to be forging that information. I know that, you know, like, my neighbors, we've already, their signatures are on the yes petition, so that isn't a problem for me. But that's a way that at least, before you even get your permit, they're notified by you as their neighbor, because you should be able to talk to your neighbors, and discuss it with them, and see how they feel about it, and then if they don't like it, I mean, I mean, I don't know how you guys would work that in, but is there some way that we could do something like that, instead of, you know, this whole $900 fee? Secondly, if we decide that we don't want, or if people, you know, this two-year probationary period, or whatever it is, what happens afterwards? We're not allowed to murder our chickens, what are we going to do with them? We're just, they're just going to disappear into thin air? That's not going to happen. So there has to be something that doesn't, you know, like, we can't just decide that, "Oh, it's over, if these people are not violating anything, and we've had our yearly inspection, and nothing's going wrong," you can't just be like, "Yep, nope, we're done with this program now, you guys spent a bunch of money, sorry." I think that, I think that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone else wish...
Hi, Sarah Thompson, 319 Marengo Road. I just wanted to make a comment about the, the permit cost. I don't know if it's still set at, it feels like $300. I think that's pretty crazy, like, a lot of the other ones were between like $20 and $50, and it's just, along with that conditional use, which I also think is unnecessary, it's just too many costs to make this accessible to people. I also think the, the barrier, or whatever it is, maybe there's a consideration for people who have like over two acres, like, our lot is like 180 feet, and, yeah, our neighbor's way over there, and they can see us, but do we still need a six-foot barrier? Our property's so large, so, I don't, just something to consider. Thanks.
Thank you.
Robert Thompson, 319 Marengo Road. I just wanted to second the, I had the same thoughts about the conditional use. My concern was what happens if you decide to cancel the program? What are we going to do with the chickens? You know, that does seem like a concern, not only for the homeowners, but the chickens themselves. That is something we have to think about, if that were to be the case. The, I second the, the idea, I think with the costs, they do, when you look at the breakdown of the other cities, seem to be the highest of all the examples given. So maybe reevaluating those costs to maybe make it a little bit more feasible for people who want to do it, especially the legal route, if this becomes law. I just had a little bit of a thought about coop design. I do agree that having some kind of standards for coop design seems to be logical. I am a little concerned with that, though. I know that there are lots of coop designs out there of good quality, that, like, for me, for instance, I've been researching designs that are mobile. So within the run, you can move the coop around, they have bottoms that allow the, okay, the escrement to drop down. So instead of having to go in and clean out the coop manually, you can just move it every day. Most of the droppings are happening at night, about 80% or so. So you can move it manually, and then cover that area with compost or woodchips to kind of bring that back into stasis, and just move it around. Eventually, that all gets kind of decomposed in, which to me, I think is a preferable way of doing it. So just some concern about, you know, if it's too rigid, you may exclude perfectly reasonable designs out of that equation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Nisi Rock Castle, 202 North Jefferson Street. So I want to start off with that conditional use permit. Actually, let me move back a little bit. In a lot of these packets, these minutes, these agendas, we've seen, we're comparing different ways that different cities are outlining their rules, their fees, their regulations. So it seems like we're trying to assess all of that, and kind of average it all together. We're kind of way off the course that they all took, because out of just these five, none of them require a conditional use permit. So why are we doing that, especially at the cost? Especially if after two years, it can be canceled. People are investing $900 in a permit, the money for the chickens, the money for the food, the money for the coop, money for the run. So what is the point of having an application with a checklist and criteria they have to meet, if we have a conditional use, anyway? That whole permit, they have to have an inspection, they have to pass these things to be able to participate, and get that yearly inspection. So if we're able to change ordinances, we're able to alter things as needed, why the conditional use? And also, if we're going to have it, it's got to be affordable. I think the people would really appreciate that, because it, it's going to be a difference of middle-class, lower-class, who's going to be able to afford this? So it's very expensive. I was very happy to see, I was mistaken when it came to the privacy fence, I thought that that was required verbiage. So that's really appreciated, because that takes a big cost off. So once again, if we're going to compare our program to other surrounding cities, I, I feel like it should kind of closely align with theirs, especially we're a smaller town, we're an ag town. $300 fee the first year, okay, we talked about that, and then 100 or less after, get it, you know, it's fine. But all these other permit fees are substantially less. So, then, the per chicken registration, with what the proposed cost is here? That's nickel and diming. That's, I, I mean, I don't know why that has to be, why per chicken registration was suggested with the costs that were shown in this packet. I don't know where that, well, anyways, so conditional use, no other place does it. Nobody else did. They did a probationary period, sure, that's fine. But once again, if we're going to look to other towns for information, and what they're doing, we're veering off course. So it'd be great if that could be reassessed. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Paul Turkey, 310 Garfield Street. Got a quick question to ask. With all of you up here, were you, are you the ones who will be voting yes or no?
The aldermen will.
The aldermen will, okay. I just wanted to verify that. With regards to chickens, I can't believe we're actually even discussing this, you know, one of you gentlemen kind of compared our town with another town, you know, with Spring Grove and whatever. Do you really want to compare our town with the other towns? I mean, I've, I've lived in my town, lifelong resident, for 60 years, and, I don't know, maybe you, a lot of you are very proud of the way it is now. I'm not. And now we want to do chickens, and we were talking about grazing. I mean, this is farm. It's not in-town. It's farm use. These are residential lots. There's only so much you can do, and yet you want to do chickens, and we're talking about screening and fences. What are you going to do if neighbors don't have fences? I have two big German Shepherds. What's going to happen if my neighbor didn't have a fence, and my dog's got a hole? Who's going to be responsible? And how are you going to enforce this? Give me an answer to that. We have ordinances now, we can enforce them. We can enforce them. Anne works eight to five, seven to three, whatever it is. What's going to happen after 5:00? We can't enforce what we have now. What's going to happen when the roosters come? And don't tell me they're not. They're going to come. Who are you going to call 5:00 Sunday morning? Chickens belong on farms. I know you're looking, you all are looking just at money, the permit fee. That's all it is, permit, money. What are you going to do if the chickens get out in the road, cause an accident? Let's just say. Who's going to be responsible? And yet, how are you going to enforce this? Legally, you cannot come onto my property and check my backyard. How are you going to? This is a big problem. You cannot enforce the ordinances that we have now. And yet, we want to get chickens? And like I say, what happens if the neighbors don't have a fence? What's going to happen? So, something to really, really think about. Our lots are small. We do not need chickens. They are a farm, not in-town. So I know you're all just looking at the money part, but you got to realize, we live here. And, you know, if the neighbors get chickens, who's going to say? Who's going to keep count if they get more than four? Who's going to say they don't get a goat? So it can happen, people, trust me. I had to call the police several years ago. My neighbor was going to butcher a pig in the backyard. And that is on file. So you guys really, really need to think about this. You know, you want to compare our town with other towns, it's not even close. And now we want to bring chickens? No, you're just looking at the money part. So we got to really think about. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thanks for your comments. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, you have a motion on the floor to send this issue to the administration committee? Any other commish questions from council? Hearing none, clerk, call a roll.
Alderman Concross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavely?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, to item eight is an intergovernmental agreement for the Police Social Worker Program. Your action is requested to approve the IGA for the Police Social Worker Program to authorize a mayor's execution. The term of the agreement is May 1st, 2024 through April 30th, 2028. Chief, could you give us some comments about the success of the current program?
Taylor Keegan is our social worker that is assigned to us. She works with us as well as Woodstock Police Department. It has been a very successful and an asset to our department and the community and it's the citizens that she's been able to help and assist during her time that she's been here so far. We are also one of the bigger agencies that provide the most referrals and she, we keep her busy. So she's an asset.
Motion to approve.
Second. Wish by Schultz, second by Perkins? I was going to say, I was going to say Gorman, like, no, that's not right, Perkins. Any commish questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call a roll.
Alderwoman Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavely?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number nine is a purchase of property. Your action is requested to sanction city council action at the December 12th, 2023 city council meeting to place a bid on property located at 503B Southeastman Street in the amount of $814 and to authorize the execution of the purchase contract with McHenry County.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of property. I second it.
Wish by Hatterline, second by Luna. Any other comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call a roll.
Alderman, Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavely?
Yes.
Concross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 7 to 1.
Thank you. Item number 10 is the Turtle Crossing Money Market Account. Your action is requested to reallocate the accumulated interest in the Turtle Crossing Money Market Account in the amount of $50,232 to start up the revolving loan interior improvement program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wish by Schultz, second by Concross. Any comments or questions here?
I do have a question. So I read everything, but I just want to clarify, I know this is earnings on the amount that's been in the account for quite a while. Is it, is it safe to say that the ultimate expenses that the city may have at Turtle Crossing down the road, with interest, with, you know, just price, prices going up, that we aren't going to need those increased funds to fund whatever the improvements are that we may be obligated to at Turtle Crossing, since it's not fully built out?
So the principal is the money that is restricted to this location of Turtle Crossing, but the interest is not. The, the interest at the moment is in that account and is restricted because by the virtue that it's there. However, we were looking for an opportunity to fund this interior revolving loan program, and this is an opportunity where there is funding that is available to the city to fund that, to move into that fund. So that's been the recommendation of city staffing. Of course, it's up to council whether you care to do that or not. The principal would still remain in that fund to be utilized in Turtle Crossing as it's intended.
And what, what specifically are those funds intended to be used for Turtle Crossing?
Infrastructure, so it's fees, if I understand correctly, it was a contingency from the previous builder who went bankrupt and left. And so those fees could be utilized for street improvements in that neighborhood, could be utilized for water improvements, sewer improvements, any improvement that's restricted into that neighborhood. And that's up to council, how they would want to spend that.
So there's not a specific, there's nothing specific that we're required to do at some point, like?
It was, it was very, I, you know, I have to admit, I didn't know it was there. I think there's other people who did not know it was there. But now that everybody does know that it's there, I mean, you know, there's ideas floating all over the place on how we might do it. I think some of it was allocated for the, that island, right?
Well, we didn't, we haven't allocated anything. We asked for a study to find out what it would cost to do something with it. You know, the, when you enter Turtle Crossing, they've got those islands of grass that we have to mow. It was supposed to be, they were supposed to have a.
A homeowner's.
Homeowner's, but they do not. So the city mows that land, which we should not mow that land, it's not ours. But the idea is to turn that into something that doesn't need to be mowed anymore.
Gotcha.
So it doesn't cost us any money, you know? So take, I don't know, $10,000, remove the grass, put in charcoal, whatever, you know, and be done with it.
That helps. Thank you very much.
Sure. Any other comments or questions?
Is this loan going, expanding from Ira Street?
Well, that's the intention. So the current revolving loan program is currently, by policy, has been downtown district for facades. We would like to expand that program to help our businesses to obtain very low interest rate money to be able to do improvements interior to their buildings. And so this would be some seed money that would help us to create that part of the program.
And it's not just downtown?
I, I think that's up for discussion.
All right, so it hasn't been finalized yet?
No, obviously, we're trying to fund the fund and then it would be up to Alderman Concross's committee on policy for that fund moving forward.
When we did discuss it during the meeting, there was, there was a lot of enthusiasm to expand it to further areas within town. But the, the, the funding isn't quite that robust just yet, so the plan is to get the, get the funding bigger and then allow it to expand to other areas. Because, I mean, I mean, my opinion was, and it's kind of the consensus, I think, was just that we'd like to see as many businesses be able to take advantage as possible because, you know, it doesn't matter where they are in town, a business is a business. So where we're at now, we just, we want to expand it, but we need to grow the fund more.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, clerk, call a roll.
Alderman Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavely?
Yes.
Concross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 11 is a proposed ordinance for open meetings act. Your action is requested to adopt the proposed ordinance amending section 2.02 regulating electronic attendance at public meetings in accordance with the open meetings act.
Make a motion to approve the open meetings act ordinance.
I'll second.
Wish by Hatterline, second by Concross. Hearing none, clerk, call a roll.
Alderwoman Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavely?
Yes.
Concross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries, ordinance 2024-101.
Motion to approve. Second.
Wish by Concross, second by Schultz.
Years.
All right, hearing next, our call a roll.
Alderwoman Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavely?
Yes.
Concross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries, ordinance 2024-102.
Thank you. Item number 13 is proposed ordinance. Proposed ordinance to create a new section, 20.0.
Motion to approve. Second.
Wish by Concross, second by Schultz.
There was a question that was brought up before, and I believe it was Alderman Gorman that brought it up. Just so the general public knows as well, right now, the plan should, this ordinance have to be enacted, is that we have contacts with the county and the county emergency management. We've reached out with, and started communications with the local churches who have offered to provide space. And we've also received a donation from some people in Woodstock totaling about 41 sets of male, female, adult, child jackets and some warm apparel.
So for the, for the benefit of the, of the viewing or viewing public, could you, Mike, would you mind clarifying what this does include?
Yes.
Thank you.
The ordinance is a busing. The bus company, if they were to bring a. To allow people to gain transportation to downtown Chicago, that they. We do not have the services or the resources to try and schedule those kind of, of drop offs, if you will, that are coinc.
Yes.
Lavely?
Yes.
Concross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries, ordinance 2024-103.
Thank you. Item number 14 is a mixed quality base selection process for.
I'll make their motion.
Second.
Wish by Perkins, second by Hatterline.
Actually, Rob can give us a little more understanding what this is, entails.
Good evening. So basically, this, this is in relation to certain federal and state-funded projects when it comes to consultant selection. So anything over $40,000 requires us, and use of federal money requires us to have this process in place. So basically, it is a selection committee with predetermined rules, regulations on each and how are selected, outlining who's part of the selection committee, what the, what the sections are scored upon and stuff like that. So this is pretty standard stuff. This is a requirement of receiving the funding that we get for some of these projects and just sort of boilerplate stuff.
And it's for federal funding, correct?
Yes, for federal funding and certain, once it gets to certain thresholds. But generally speaking, this is just for a lot of the, the major projects we have going on in order to be able to select consultants.
And we, currently, Ira Street would, would have qualified to need this?
For, that was a, that was a grant.
Do we have any current projects?
So we're coming into phase two, phase three, once we get into those, when we're really expending the, the funds for construction, design engineering and actual construction, we're going to need this, this policy in place in order to move forward those projects. Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, clerk, call a roll.
Alderwoman Lavely?
Yes.
Concross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries, ordinance 2024-104.
Thank you. Clerk, item 15 is a call for a community economic development committee meeting.
Did you get a copy of the?
I did not.
Suggested topics are, if you want to add anything to that?
Okay. Yeah, just pick a date, that's it.
Is there anything that needs to be discussed on this that needs to be handled by a certain date or just anytime before city council? Okay. The only thing is, because we have Parks and Rec program on Wednesday nights. Okay. Which they need this space, we're asking all the committees to try to avoid a Wednesday night. Well, it doesn't have to be on a Wednesday. I'm thinking probably like the, I mean, does the 13th work for, for you Tuesday?
That works for me, February 13th?
Yeah.
6:30 or 6:00 or?
Probably 6:30. February 13th, does that sound good for community development? Anybody opposed to that? Everybody's good with that? Okay. Right on to February 13th, 6:30.
All right, thank you. Just getting it in my calendar. Okay. Item number 16 is department headed reports. Let's start on this end. Chief?
I hope everybody had a good holiday since, we hadn't had a meeting since early December. The police brand's been doing pretty good. It's been pretty, pretty good for us the last couple of months due to the holidays and then obviously the weather. I wanted to thank Rob and his crew for the last couple of weeks on, on the streets and all the work that they've done and the hours they put in. The only really big thing that has gone is, on is Detective C. was nominated by the McHenry County State Street. Detective C. was nominated by the McHenry County State Streets Office for the McHenry County Chiefs of Police Association Officer of the Year. Unfortunately, he did not win. But he was recognized at that banquet last Friday for his, for his nomination. Other than that, the, my report is submitted.
All right, thank you. DC, anything?
Just a couple of updates. So, we're, tomorrow is week three of the ESL program. That's been going really, really well. It's been, first week, we had six individuals. And then last week, we've had, or we had 10 individuals. The feedback that we've been getting has been absolutely fantastic. Tomorrow, we have a little bit of a shift as we have a conflict. But we're going to make do and make it work and, and keep on chugging away at that. Limber Life, that registration is live right now. That next session starts up on January 30th. We have basketball. That's in full swing right now. We're playing both Saturday and Sunday this weekend. And I get to see TJ on Saturday, maybe. But no, everything's going well with that. And then, we're currently been meeting with two individuals, part of the men's soccer league, working on a tournament for the end of July. So, our net report is submitted, Mayor.
Thank you. Rob?
What year is it? It feels like it's been a long one so far.
We've just been trying to keep up with the snow, rain, ice, frost, freeze, main breaks, just trying to keep everything going. Fortunately, the staff and the equipment has cooperated so far. Other than that, just sort of little stuff here and there. We will be putting together a, a new permit process for utility permits, seeing as now with some development here and there. We're getting more requests from NICOR and other municipalities or other utilities to break ground and do directional boring and stuff. So, Dom and I will be working on a formal process for that so we can recoup some of the fees that are required for our engineering review. And hopefully be seeing that in the near future, so.
All right, thank you. Ann? Okay. Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Happy to announce that the Mug Coffee House is now open at 107 West Front Street. They got great coffee and other items in there, so stop on in. Open from 6:00 to 2:00 during the weekday and 7:00 to 1:00 on Saturday and 8:00 to 2:00 on Sunday, maybe. You can also find them on Facebook and Instagram. Dunkin' Donuts, not to be outdone. They picked up their permit. Their permit's been approved. We got their contractor licenses today, so they should be starting soon. We will not announce a grand opening day yet. The Design Coach and Canvas and Company here on North Air, their first review was completed. They're making some minor modifications, so we're waiting for that second set of plans to come in. Tomas Greenway, building the duplexes on A Street. He's got six of eight units rented already. Four of those are rented from engineers at USMG, which is great to see. So, we connected them and they got a nice partnership going over there. They're really nice units. Tomas added a lot of nice features in there, lighting, stuff that you would probably see in a catalog and not a rental. So, it's really neat to see what he did with the units. And as far as the storage, Greenway Storage goes on North Division, next week, they'll be starting their 25,000 square foot new building. This is a canopy building for under roof storage of RVs, vehicles, and things like that, which is great for the city because we get sales tax on storage of vehicles. And Ford, their new addition for electric vehicles is complete. We did the final inspection there several weeks ago. I had training yesterday on Datify. This is a software that we got attached to our membership with naturally McHenry County. This allows us to look at foot traffic at different events, businesses, and traffic flows and things like that. So, Administrator Leoni and the mayor will also get login credentials so we can all work together on helping our businesses figure out their market and how to better market themselves. To expand on Ann's report, since I came on April of last year, gave her a little bit of breathing room to get caught up on code enforcement. So, in 2023, as you'll see, she was able to issue 433 notice of violations, up 111 notices from 2022, where she issued 322 on top of running the building department alone. And then, in 2023, we added $9.5 million in construction value with all of our permits compared to 4.8 million in 2022. On the first day back to work here in January, we issued two permits for new homes, for Habitat, for Humanity, two single-family homes, which is nice. And then, Tomas is going to be applying for additional duplexes next week, hopefully, he said, so.
I'm sorry, next?
Next week.
Next week, okay.
Yep. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Donovan, I just have a question. Have you gotten any updates on the Starbucks? I know everybody keeps asking me.
Nothing that I can announce at this time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Treasurers' report. Where did I go? Why, you know, I skipped committee reports. Let's go committee reports. Dan?
Just want to thank City Public Works for the very, very, very unfriendly job of, of doing everything that they can to keep the streets and everything open. And the, especially the main break that we had that was, I don't know, like 19 below zero or something like that when they were trying to do that. So, great job keeping up with that. That was all I had.
All right. Johnny, you have anything?
Uh, no, I just, well, just basically, Rob's crew is doing too good a job, I think, because when, when the streets are snow-covered, I could imagine that the asphalt underneath is beautiful. And now, that everything's melted, it's not so good. That's all.
Thank you. Jake?
Uh, no, thanks to Rob. I mean, I was, we have a business directly affected by that main break in front of Longhair Computer on the coldest day I've experienced in years. And I don't know how they dealt with it, but it was resolved within 24 hours, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
No, just look forward to our admin meeting on the 8th, February 8th. Have a lot of interesting items. And then, I just did want to just give a thank you to Lou and Rob, but Lou for including the library director in your staff meeting, meetings, which hadn't happened previously. And then, Rob for working collaboratively, offering to work collaboratively with the library on projects that, that our public works department can, can help with. And anyway, it just, it's, it's a really nice, it's just a really nice change for the, the library feeling like they're part of the, part of the family. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, yes. Thanks, Deb. And there will be the budget workshop, and we'll just do it one day. And it'll be February 24th, which is a Saturday. And we'll start at 8:00. We'll start at 8:00, yes. Yeah.
Start at 8:00. And the plan is to be done by 3:00, so.
8 till 3:00, yep.
It, it'll be a busy day, but I think
I'll bring donuts, somebody will make coffee.
We got through it in one day last year.
We did.
And I think it makes a lot more sense than I did one year.
Absolutely, no question. Yeah, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosa?
No, I don't have anything.
Matt?
Nope.
Charlie?
Nothing more for me.
Lori?
Hello, Mayor.
All right. Attorneys' report.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Administrators' report.
Just a, I, report as submitted. And the, the things I wanted to add is, we had a very good meeting earlier today with Congressman LaHood and State Senator Severson. I finally learned how to pronounce it correctly. And that opened up some doors, some, to potential funding for some projects that the city needs. And so, that was a very good meeting. And the other thing I, I just want to say, you know, I've, I've given props to the department heads. But one thing that kind of came up over the last couple of weeks is also the staffs that work underneath you. It's, it's nice, Rob, Jim's not here, but he's got some very talented people. The police department has some very talented people that work underneath them as well. So, it's not just the department heads, but also the staff. I just wanted to say thank you for doing a good job.
Thank you. Clerk's report.
Upcoming meeting dates, Mayor. There is a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on February 6th at 7:00 PM. Next admin meeting is February 8th at 6:30 PM. Community Development meets February 13th at 6:30 PM. The regular park board meeting scheduled for the 19th has been canceled because it's President's Day and rescheduled to February 26th at 6:00 PM. Can't forget the budget workshop. February 24th at 8:00 AM. And then, our next regular council meeting will be February 27th at 7:00 PM. The only other thing I have, Mayor, everybody, please be on the lookout. You should be receiving your annual notification from the McHenry County Clerk to file your economic interest statement. I have submitted those names. They usually send it out like the first week of February. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. And I, I can attest that they will keep sending you notices until you do it. And if you don't do it in time, you will, there's a fine. So, make sure you do it on time. I was able to squeak in just right last year, so. Yes, don't, don't forget to do that. Okay, for the mayor's report, I, I, just on the heels of what Lou said, we did meet today with our Congressman Darren LaHood, as well as our State Senator Dave Severson. We did a tour of the USMG plant. It's the first time that our congressman has been in the building and got to introduce them to the people there. Interestingly, we found out some new people that have joined their organization. And I think one is on their board, is a couple former ambassadors. So, they, they have a lot of big plans going on there. They are on a hiring at the moment. I think they're looking to hire at this time up to 300 people. And so, they'd had a job fair, I think they said last week. Was it, was it last, last Friday? And they were able to hire like 20 people out of that job fair. They're going to hold another one, I think, in two weeks, something like that. We keep an eye out for that. If you're looking for a job, they're definitely hiring mechanics and welders and engineers, laborers. There's, they have a lot of deeds over there. So, we're looking forward to see what they're going to do. They, they have started production. They are producing some gloves, as well as building machines that make the gloves. And yeah, we're, we're excited about what they have opening. They just got another large grant, I think, to help sustain their business. So, they have something like, I think he said, a quarter, quarter of a billion dollars worth of funding to move the, the plant forward. So, hopefully, they'll be in our community for a very long time and hopefully good stewards too, so.
Did State Senator and the congressman have to sign non-disclosure agreements?
They did not.
Oh, just curious if that happened.
They did not. They did not make them, so.
I had to poke the bear on that one.
So, it is encouraging to see business coming here. There's, you know, there's, there's, between this company and their look to bring additional people to that campus because they are not going to use the entire campus. So, there's, there's opportunity for more growth within Harvard. And one of the things we drove home to our elected officials was the need for workforce housing because there is not enough housing to support their needs as well as needs of other companies. And indeed, it's a common message throughout most of Illinois. Many, many, many municipalities are running into the same issue. And he is sponsoring a bill to help try and bring back some additional tax credits to help bring about this type of housing. So, we'll see, and we'll see if we can get some help from federal governments to help us bring some additional housing to Harvard. And that's all I have for tonight. We will have a closed session this evening. So, I think that this time, we would take a, a vote to go into closed session, or a motion to go into
Make a motion to, for the council go into closed section, session?